Central Curry School District Board of Directors Meeting to Order Wednesday, November 18th, 2020 at the Bowie High School Library. Begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And since somebody was nice enough to print the mission statement on the supplementary page, I'll go ahead and read it tonight. The mission of the Central Curry School District, number one, in partnership with families and community is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence. Item number two, presentations, recognition of the Hive program. I don't know who's going to take the lead on this one.
I can start and then others can chime in if you'd like. So I'd like to have Carly. Yeah. Why don't you come up? Awesome. And Jeremy, you probably should join us as well. Oh, no, that's fine.
I'm going this way.
You going to join us?
I'm going to join.
I'm going to join.
Yes. We'll, we will somehow do this.
A lot of socially distance really.
Yeah. We didn't stand by each other.
No touching.
If we have to.
Well, it goes probably without saying that our school year could not have, would not be where it is this year without the Ascend program and its baby Hive. Carly, from the very beginning of our planning in June, was very active in district planning, and her mission was to make sure that we had places for kids without the Internet as well as in need of childcare with a special emphasis for staff who would be in difficult situations to try to do, be a parent and be a teacher at the same time. So throughout the summer and with her work with Jeremy, got funding throughout our community. And with that came what has now resulted in a safe place for almost 50 kids every day to go to school. It is a program that has raised eyebrows in a good way throughout the state through Jeremy's network with librarians. And I think a lot of people had the idea of how librarians could help, but it was the initiative of Carly and then hiring an awesome staff of retired teachers that knew the kids, knew the programs. There was all the learning curve on the technology, but once we got through that, I'm sorry, I got to say it, Hive was really buzzing. So with that, this is, you know, this is a Dollar Tree frame and a 10 cent piece of paper, but it really has so much more value in that from, so for me, our administrators, our teachers, and obviously our students and family, we'd like to thank the Ascend program, the library, and specifically all of you who have contributed hours and hours for our students. So, thank you very much. Carly, is there anything you want to add or? And Tom, you got a picture?
Yeah, I got a circle.
Okay.
Um, no, I mean, yeah, it's, I feel fortunate to have had kids in the building much sooner than you guys have. That was probably the saving grace of my sanity, quite honestly, as stressful as it was initially. Seeing kids every day has been a bonus for us because we were missing, missing that part of our jobs. You know, I can't say enough about your teaching staff at Riley Creek. I mean, and not that your teaching staff in high school is not great, but I deal more with Riley Creek staff, obviously. And they have, every time we've had an issue or a kid has had an issue, they have dropped what they are doing and either come by, call us, FaceTime. I mean, I've had multiple FaceTime conversations with kids and teachers walking them through things. And everyone's been, you know, I mean, just willing to do that, willing to go that extra mile. And so it makes it worth it to go the extra mile when everyone's willing to do it.
So we're fortunate that they have funding through January.
Through January.
And then we'll just see where things go. And if not, I think you, the model you've created, I think can be replicated at both of our schools in some way.
Right.
And we'll just see, see where that goes. But thanks for coming out tonight. We received a little bit of thanks from the board and.
I want to add one thing, and that is that from the perspective of a community partner who's not in the classroom with the kids, but who's trying at some level to build partnerships in the community, I appreciate how complicated it is for an entity like the school to work with a completely different entity who has a completely different set of rules and guidelines. And so I guess I would just say that this, this has been an experiment with the kids, but it's also been an experiment in collaboration and appreciating your guys' patience and wanting to work with us.
Absolutely. Well, thanks to me.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully your trailer still came out. All right, agenda changes. Approval of consent agenda, minutes of the October 21st, 2020. Observations changing.
I have no changes.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second question.
Pause and paper. Fine. Opposed. Agenda approved. All right. System input for non-agenda items. I have note cards in front of me tonight and no emails, so move right on to district reports. Chris.
Well, I looked through here to try to find something exciting, but there wasn't anything on it that stood out. Lots of words like disinfectant, sanitizer, maybe masks, you'll see, you know, next month. So I think it was, count to five, well, yeah, about $113,000 this last month. The one thing I want to show you is actually not on your report, but it's going to be upcoming, and that's your blue revenue report. I know we always talk about it this time of year. Current year taxes, you can see under range today, you know, we've received about $1,200 next month when we're sitting here and we're presenting this. I would expect that to probably be over $2.5 million. So this is the time of year where we get our influx of revenue, obviously from property taxes, which is our biggest revenue per our general fund. And then obviously we continue to use that, you know, for the remainder of the year. Not a whole lot yet, but very shortly. Actually, we have it now, it's just not on your report. We have quite a bit of it, about a million.
And our cash flow looks good as well.
Yes, cash is doing actually quite well from the savings that we had at the end of last year. You know, sub-costs obviously incredibly lower just from all of the different things that we've been doing, but cutting off spending that last year, we drew up more cash in anticipation of this. And then the latest forecast I believe we received today from the state was showing the next biennium, they estimate right now to be down just a little under $1 billion. And although that sounds like an enormous amount, it's a lot better than what the last couple of forecasts have been.
Right.
So it's going in the right direction. We're still in the hole, but you know, we're purposely trying to save as much as we can to try to keep this as full as we can.
True. Pretty good. Any questions for Chris? All right. Principal report. Mr. Denning, you're first.
All right, so you have my one from last Friday, but a lot has happened since last Friday, so just a couple of things to add on. Some things that went over, some of you participated or your kids did in the online reptile assembly, and that was pretty cool to see. Had a couple of kids kind of dominate the questions, but it was still neat to see, and it was one of the cheaper assemblies we've had at Riley Creek, you know. And the last time we had a reptile guy here, we packed the gym out at night. He came by, did kind of a free assembly, showed some of his animals at Riley Creek, and then it was kind of a tease for that evening, and everybody paid a dollar to get in. And we standing room only in the gym, and he had a king cobra, you know, it was pretty amazing. So hopefully the kids had a good time with that, too. Oh, I had a, something else to show you. Most of you guys probably get Rural Light, and you saw some of our, the Turtle Foundation Bright Ideas winners, so that's Corey and McKenzie there. I took the picture, but they didn't even give me credit. They, and they, Corey put in for a digital expansion via multimedia display to enhance digital learning, another name for a gigantic TV. And McKenzie's project was a Riley Creek 3D printer. So it's pretty awesome that they got these, and actually it kind of inspired, there's another round now, and I've had another teacher that's going to apply for a new round on that one, too. So we'll get PR for Riley Creek there. I believe this is the West Coast in Alaska did this magazine, too, so that was kind of neat. Also, we just kind of finalized that today after talking with him. The dental program is going to be coming that we have, it's kind of a free dental program for needy kids that have dental problems, they kind of screen some of the kids. We usually do a lot more kids, but because of social distancing and all the safety procedures, we're going to just really focus on our K2 kids this time on December 7th and 8th. And then we, one of the benefits of being a small town, we know a lot of the kids and the families, so we kind of know which kids might, might need some help. So we're going to kind of pick some out of the upper grades and fill in any empty slots we have because it's a, parents have to give us permission to get their kids into this. So we mail a flyer home, and the parents fill it out, and it comes back, and then we fill slots for the kids. Any open slots, we'll fill in some of the other kids, too. So that was the dental program. If you know, if you ever had a cavity, you know how awful it is to have a sore tooth and try to focus on anything else. And so we're going to try to get our kids fixed in that area. Up the end on our goals from October now, we have the stuff from last Friday. Bring K2 students into the building in groups of 10 per cohort by October 26th. And we were close to that. We did it for a week, and we called that LIPPE, Limited In-Person Instruction. And it was actually really good. It was kind of an introduction to some of the kids, their first time on campus since March for a lot of the kids. Even though it was really small groups, it was really good for the teachers to kind of touch base, they could meet their teacher, have a 3D face instead of a screen face. And that prepared us for, well, and 3-5 kids, too. And that prepared us for our last school, there was plan and prepare for the hybrid schedule. And I can't tell you how, it was a lot more work, and I know Tim could tell that, too, and Josh could, too, and anybody with transportation or busing. We basically, you know, it's enough of a struggle just to do one schedule a year, but we've been working on three different schedules and sometimes simultaneously. Our bus drivers are amazing, and we were able to get it done. And my last three days have just been to see the kids smiles. And of course, they only have two and a half hours or so in school, so they're smiling because they're getting to go home. But, but it's, it's just, and the teachers, you know, were a little trepidatious about the whole situation with keeping the school clean and everything, but they're smiling, too. And it's just because that's what we've, those of us that wanted to be in education for a long time or have been in it for a long time, it's that relationship interaction with kids, and it's not the same using technology. And so it's been really amazing. I'm looking forward to, hopefully we can keep in it for as long as we can. And the good thing is now we kind of know the CDL, and now we're in person, so we can kind of maybe seamlessly, if we have to, flip back and forth between the two. And, but it's been nice, this is the first time since March that we've, the kids have had three days of the same thing. So the first couple of days, the busing was a little difficult, and even today there was a couple of glitches, but each day it gets smoother and smoother and smoother. So we, everybody, kids, parents, especially at home, doing something brand new, and our teachers, we've all, we've earned a week off next week for Thanksgiving, so we're really looking forward to that. Some problems, we're still, we still have some Internet problems, but now that we've got the kids in the building, at least they're getting a, you know, two and a half hours or so a day of instruction, and we're able to send some paperwork home with them for them to do, but we're still working on getting some people some hot spots. And I think maybe when this, this new fiber optic cable comes in, you know, I think we're going to always have problems as long as we're in any kind of technology learning, distance learning, because there's just some areas of a rural community that will not ever have access, no matter how much money you have, you're not going to have access. And tech support, you know, that's still something to look, look at, you know, a lot of people are thinking is, even as COVID goes down, that there might be even more distance learning and utilize it for when kids are absent, for being sick, or, you know, maybe dad has to go on a work to Roseburg or something, takes kids with him, and they can still bring their laptops and still do something online, too. So something we need to work on is for that. And then the consistency was a problem, and I think the last three days have showed us that it's not ideal, but it's better than what we were doing before as far as getting the kids in person, too. And then I attached the schedule just so you guys could kind of see what, what Riley Creek does for our middle school, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday for the, for the middle school, right there on the, and then if you go to the next page, that's K5, the K5 schedule. And the, the most difficult one, I didn't include there because your blank screen might have exploded, that was a, my IA schedule, I've got nine IAs, some working offsite, some are kind of a combination, some, and most are onsite now. Just to, I basically have to build a schedule for them for every minute of the day, for them to help teachers, to cover recess duties. Now, it's a new duty that we were, I had before, is going out on bus runs to deliver food. And then every day we find, and it usually takes us in a normal year, a month. If you talk to Teresa Beeman, because she's the one that kind of codes everything, I have to send her a schedule, and every time I update, it was like almost every day I sent her a new update because we find a glitch, or a teacher doesn't need an IA at this time, but this other teacher does. So we were constantly tweaking it for three or four weeks anyway to start a school. And that's kind of what we're working on right now, is doing that. We've had three days of a new schedule for them, we're still tweaking it. There's probably, I'm guessing it'll be till, till Christmas, till we actually have it cemented in stone. But that's a good thing about being in a smaller district without a lot of rules and regulations that big districts have, that we have the flexibility to put our IAs where they can do the most good. And, and they're really an amazing group of people because, you know, we had to call them up and say, by the way, you're going to be helping deliver food at 6:00 in the morning, and none of them signed up for that, you know. And so there, I never had one at all say anything disparaging or, or be upset about doing it, they just say, hey, it's food for the kids, and we're going to do it. So anyway, as you can tell, I'm tired, but I'm ecstatic that we got, we have kids in the building, and I had my first troublemaker come to my office today, and that was exciting because that was, that's kind of fun because I got to talk to him for a little while, and we came to a consensus, and that was good, too. So anyway, it's, it's good, and I'm literally looking forward to tomorrow, and after Thanksgiving, hopefully we'll still be in, in hybrid learning. So, any questions, Riley?
I just wanted to say that the assembly the other day was really awesome, and he was like excellent at letting people ask their questions. It was just such a cool thing for parents to be involved, too, or you don't get to see that.
Yeah, it was, and we had about, I kept kind of looking to see how many people had, it was about 50, I think, somewhere in that ballpark, and I was kind of hoping there'd be more, but that's still pretty good, you know, on a Thursday night, and it was, it was pretty cool.
I'm going to probably be a pest and keep hammering this, but what, when you say that there are some Internet connectivity issues in some areas, could you do a little deeper dive on that? I kind of want to understand.
Okay, well, as an example, Monday through Friday, there's a child that's there, I think in the afternoon, is it Cedar Valley afternoon?
Yes.
They're at Riley Creek every afternoon. And then on Friday, all the, all the middle school kids are online, one through, we're not doing fifth period, but one through eighth periods on Friday morning. She lives in Cedar Valley, and they don't have Internet.
Okay.
And so she has great stuff going on, and then Friday, what happens? Because it's live teaching, the teachers haven't pre-recorded it yet, and even if they do, how do we get her?
Right. So you're talking about Internet connectivity beyond the facility itself.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's what I want to clarify.
Yeah, and we, we actually did another experiment, I can add on, if I can add on. Darby was here just a few minutes ago, she was in the, in the primary wing, and our primary teachers and a couple others kept getting kicked off with the Internet. And so we did an experiment last week, she, for LIPPE, she went down to the junior high wing in an empty classroom and set up her class there and never got kicked off once. So, so there's something going on at Riley Creek's building, maybe the, and Dan's looking into it, the stations, but for some reason, our one wing is a little bit stronger than the other, maybe has more wireless points or something, but that's, that's an issue around.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denning. Mr. Raskin?
All right. So I apologize, I got my, my report out a little late, but it's fairly short and to the point. Just like with Riley Creek, last week we had the opportunity to transition from a comprehensive distance learning model to a hybrid model, which was honestly one of the best things that could have happened to us all year. It's CDL with teenagers is a challenge because you get a variety of, everybody's seen stuff on, on television and on the Internet at this point, making fun of Zoom meetings and things like that about how they're all of different personalities. A lot of times with teenagers, what you get is you ask a question as a teacher, and it's, or they've all switched their cameras off because it's 8:00 AM, or 8:30 AM, they just rolled out of bed at 8:27, and then, uh, my webcam doesn't work because they don't want to be seen on camera, which is sort of understandable. Having kids back in the building has sort of re-energized teachers and kids here, and just in these three days, some kids have gotten more done than they had in nine weeks prior because now they have somebody that they are seeing daily, they're accountable to them, they're, they're, it's awfully easy to push that red button that says, and call them and go, well, I've advocated, and I don't have to worry about seeing them and being accountable to them. Seeing them in the hallways and the teacher saying, hey, you know, you didn't get that thing done, can you, can you work on that? Yeah, okay. And so kids were coming in with a lot more work and getting a lot more done. Our hybrid model, we go 8:15 to 11:40, or 11:04 for our first cohort, then we have 90 minutes of cleaning time and prep and lunches and things like that. We do 12:30 to 3:19. Each day, kids see four of their classes, they don't see all of them, but they either have, in the mornings, they come to class, they have work that they're expected to go home and continue throughout the day, or vice versa. And they're seeing, and we see every kid every day that is currently enrolled with us for in-person learning. We're doing, students are doing a great jobs with masking and maintaining social distance. I thought we'd have a lot more issues with, by now with teenagers, you know, oh, 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 sorry, sorry, you know, that whole thing. There is an understanding right at the moment that this is something that could go away. And for the first time in kids' lives, they don't want it to. So they're, they're willing to jump through a hoop that's on fire over a sharp tank, they have to, to maintain in-person learning. We have a continued emphasis on staying safe and open, and that students are part of the solution for that. And one of the, hopefully, positive side benefits, reinforcing out to the rest of the community that, hey, we want to stay open, so let's keep all doing our part. Couple of project updates, this weekend, storm has exposed or made several leaks in the roof on the building worse. We're working with a roofing company out of Crescent City to get estimates on repairs right at the moment. Woodshop, the woodshop was one of particular concern, one of the corners has started to kind of peel up from the membrane. The leak that's been there sort of annually on the worst rainstorms has gotten more noticeable, so we're trying to do what we can to work with that. And then continued expansion in the online platform, I left this on there because I had it on last time. In the hybrid model and with the potential return to CDL, Athena and Microsoft Teams is a part of our digital learning platform, and that's just the way it is. It's not going away anytime soon. So we're, I'm, one of the goals that I have is to try to find some best practices models around blended classrooms and around online teaching to provide some additional PD to my teachers for that, because that is something that we're going to be working with for a while. And to be frank, even if we do get the opportunity to come back full time, there are going to be times that some of those practices are good practices that we should integrate into our classrooms anyway. One of the board's goals is always to bring 21st century learning into the classroom. In many cases, this is what 21st century learning looks like. Again, some of the things I left on here from last time, social and emotional health of students, some anxieties were about being back on campus this week, we were really talking about the teachers. There was a lot of that first day of school jitters, but then in addition, there's that sort of, I mean, call it what you will, but it's, it's that low-level anxiety at all times of, about the fact that we're teaching in a global pandemic, we don't know where these kids are coming from and what they've been exposed to and things like that. One of the most powerful motivators was just seeing kids again. And teachers feel like it's their first year teaching on their first day of teaching again, and they're bumbling, and they're, and my motto to them has been, again, just remember, nobody will count the number of times you get knocked down, but they'll all remember the time you don't get back up. So you keep getting up, you keep doing what you're doing, and you keep putting on a good show of it. And you know, the staff really overwhelmingly has responded positively to that. We still have some kinks to work out. I mean, today, we had, we've been asking kids to wait out on the lawn because we want them in at a certain time and things like that, trying to discourage that, okay, we open at 8:00, and kids are here at 7:15. But at the same time, we had a major downpour today, and I'm not going to let kids sit on the front lawn and get soaked. So we put them in the cafeteria, it becomes a little more of a social distancing, hey, stay apart. But you know what, they're dry, they're warm, they're safe, and they're durable, so we're happy to work some of those things out. And then communication and accountability, one of the things I've been doing is doing a weekly video update about what was going on in distance learning. I didn't do one last weekend because I was trying to figure out if we were actually going to get to do a hybrid thing, because I'd hate to have gone on, recorded a five-minute video about, hey, it's going to be hybrid, this is what we're going to do, and this is going to be something, and this, and no, we're not. So I wasn't willing to do that to myself or the district, so I waited. This week, I am going to put something up, just a quick, you know, cut together video of photos and video moments from the return to learning this week. And then athletics and activities. This was one of the, that same motto that I, that I said I've been using with the staff was the one I had to take today. There were a lot of times getting kind of kicked in the teeth today. One of the ones that was not necessarily unexpected or truly that negative, but it still was hard to have to talk with coaches and kids about. Today, OSAA issued guidance that, for the next two weeks during the freeze, there were no indoor practices for sports, no indoor events for sports, and then all outdoor sports activities are, again, more heavily limited. That was not a lot of fun to hear, as we've got, you know, a group of volleyball players who are going, hey, we got two practices left, we're having a lot of fun, we're, we're making really great gains, and then we get to play in March, oh, wait, we don't get to practice. Why? And like I said, it wasn't altogether unexpected, but still, we, we thought we were going to get under the wire and get the Thanksgiving break without it. And then the other one, which is still kind of nice, Smile Club, the GHS Smile Club, the, the science club that's running conjunction with Oregon State University. Bummer, that last week, they were going to have their first field trip out at Elephant, Elephant Creek Bar, or no, Elephant Bar Trailhead, there we go. I knew I had those words right, but I had them in the wrong order. They were going to go out there with the Curry Watership Council to start doing some research about a repair project out there. And then we had that kind of like little storm surge that wouldn't have been fun to be out in, so we had to cancel that. We are currently working to arrange another field trip or for similar outdoor experiences. So right now, that's kind of where we're at at the high school. It's a, every day's a little frantic, but at the same time, it's reassuring to, you know, sit next to Mrs. McGinnis's room, and she's still teaching Fahrenheit 451, which was one of my favorite houses to teach, and still hear kids going, wow, that still really like makes a lot of sense today. So it's nice to see that despite everything else, learning's still happening and life continues on. So, any questions? Jeremy, you look like you were done.
No, that's cool.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. 6.3 Superintendent Report. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. And so, try to go through this quickly. First is just your monthly report on, let's say I can wear blue, is your, is our enrollment report. As you can see, we made the transition from online to, from CDL to hybrid, in that we did have a few students change their mind. So you see, I, starting a new statistic to follow, that we had, you know, 11 kids, whether some of these might have been move-ins, but the difference essentially is we had 11 kids join the onsite program and 14 left the online program. So the net of that is we had three people have left the district. But, and then I, as a comparison to last year at this time, we're down 34. And very coincidentally, that aligns with the 34 kids that we know enrolled in charter schools and homeschooling. schools and home. Now, granted, we've had families move in and families move out, but that's more coincidental than a true algorithm of having that go together. So certainly, we're going, as we look at the impact, remember, in school funding, you have like kind of a year of grace until our lower enrollment this year catches up with us. So, but that will be something that we continue to look at throughout the year. We have been selected to be a part of a pilot project with the University of Oregon in trauma-informed school systems. We know that one of the biggest concerns with kids being in distance learning was that connection with peers, connection with staff, you know, scary statistics of, we've seen the lowest report of child abuse cases during this time is because kids aren't in school and people are having that extra set of eyes and so on. So this is a program that started with the ESD, with their SIA dollars. They partnered up with the U of O. So all of the schools in the ESD are getting subservices, but we're one of five, five to four districts that are going to get some onsite work with university staff and so on over the next year or two. I was able to attend the OSBA conference virtually last Saturday. I just mentioned a couple of them. It wasn't a lot of new stuff for me, it would have been great for you all to see, but I think I've been keeping you pretty apprised of what's going on. But I, I think a lot of professional development activities are learning that virtual is going to be the way to go for a while. As I mentioned as well, going to the law conference, I'll be here, but it's an important law conference to do. Under personnel, I did want to let you know that Tim Ferguson has resigned his position, so we're currently advertising. He was a three-hour bus driver and a five-hour custodian, so we're kind of advertising for both and knowing that the custodian position, we could use more time, so we're going to increase that to be an eight-hour custodian and then a four-hour bus route. Because again, we're, our transportation model, we need every bus and every driver all the time. We can't afford them to be ill or have a trip or something along those lines. Crystal started to talk a little bit about the budget and with the news that came out with the economic forecast today. Again, I won't worry with all the little details, but essentially, this biennium looks healthy to finish the current school year. The governor will release her first proposed budget next Tuesday, I'm sorry, on December 1st, and it's projected to be $1 billion less. That's not the school budget, that's the overall state budget. The good news coming out of the legislator, legislation is the corporate activity tax, that's our SIA funding. So you might remember because the revenue from that corporate tax was about half this year, we got about, was about a third of our grant. So the, the projections right now is that we will be almost at least double from what we received this year. So instead of $150 million going to schools, $375 million. So we, I did do the math, but that would put us up into that, to almost $300,000, not quite to the 400 that we were hoping to be, but that's a good sign, and that's for the next two years. During the meeting on Saturday morning, there was just a very brief conversation about, a question about where the legislature is starting when they return in January, that you recall our current biennium is a $9.2 billion over the two years. In order to maintain our same current service level across the state, it goes up to $9.7, and that's just taking this year's costs and rolling them up across the state. So anything less than $9.7 really is a cut. And as you see in my notes, right now, flat funding would start at that $9.2. So obviously, there's a lot that could occur with the legislature returns. There's actually some talk about a special session in December for COVID-specific impacts. So we'll just do our judicious planning this spring and kind of the wait and see as that legislature evolves through the funding process throughout the spring. I know it sounds like kind of poor timing, but back in March, we had invited Carol Samuels from Piper Sandler, who was the guru of school bonds projects in the state. We had planned for her to speak to the board about future projects, possibilities, and then COVID happened. So we have arranged for her to speak at our, at your December meeting. And so it'll be kind of a reintroduction into all the different types of bonds. And so the conversations around is this a, this is where the conversation starts about going for a new building or remodels to buildings, repairs to buildings. You may have, I'm sure you saw that Bannon just passed, their voters passed a, I think it was a $4 million. So that was $2 million for the district, and then the state matched the $2 million. So it turned out to be four, but it was a, it was a remodel updating type of a bond. So lots of conversation, but that, Carol is the expert, and she's also very entertaining to listen to. She'll visit us via Zoom, but I look forward to seeing her conversation. And then lastly, as a part of the SIA continual revisions of the plan, we need to have some forums, community forums. Though, these are not required for boards to attend, but I would set these up in a structured way to elicit or reaffirm what our, our goals are around using that money. And then based on your response and working with the district leadership team, I just kind of tentatively put those dates out. They're not on the calendar yet, but bringing, they were strategically put in there for end of the first semester so we could look at academic growth data at that time. And then in May would be really more around your, your goal-setting time and how the teachers can help with that. So if you want to pencil those in, if you're interested in keeping that schedule, then we can confirm them as we move forward. I did have one addition to my report tonight, and that is, with, with heavy heart, but clear mind, I would like to present to you, the board, tonight, my letter of resignation for purposes of retirement, effective June 30th, at the end of the academic year. I've been in the district for five years, this is my third year as superintendent, and it's also that time in my life and my family's life where other things can begin to take priorities, like grandchildren and taking care of family and so on. So this has been on my mind for probably about six months, but finally decided that this is the best time to decide because it takes time to find replacements. And so in preparation for, hopefully, you're accepting my, my letter, that I did have some conversations with the Oregon School Boards Association, so I do have a packet that I can share, I have to share with you now, right now. So on the top of the packet is a copy of my, my letter, and then I'll very briefly walk through kind of the next steps and some planning. And then, of course, Scott. So there are many ways a board can go, and I don't have any history. Crystal would be a great person to have as a, as the historian, if you will, because she's probably been a part of the process for at least four or five superintendents over her tenure here. But, so the first page is a list of leadership hunting services, if you will. You notice a lot of them are across the country. There is one on here that I was surprised was not listed, and that's called Window to Leadership. It's Craig McKenzie, if that name, or you might have worked with Craig, with Greg before. I tried to get their information on this list today. They changed their name to now something like Next Up Leadership. So I'll continue to look for that because I think he would be someone you would also want to consider possibly. Oregon School Boards Association also has a service, and so that's the rest of the packet. Before I get to that part, there is a proposed calendar. So essentially, by looking at this, you realize it's a good idea that we start now rather than later, because you want to have the opportunity to have the best candidates. And so by following this rough calendar, you're seeing that you are interviewing candidates in March, early April, and making, making your decisions by mid-April. So something for you to look at. And then this is the proposal that actually OSBA has provided for you to consider. And again, I won't go through the whole pack, but it's a great resource. One of the things that can be done, actually, if I, I won't get into the, all the details, but briefly, one of the things that you might consider now, and I would encourage you to consider taking action tonight, is as a part of any search, regardless of the firm that you use, you're going to want to go through a kind of a needs assessment. It's called qualities and qualifications. And it's a, it's an operation of asking your community, your staff, your board, your administrators, what do, what kind of, what are the qualities that we're looking for in our, for our superintendent for Central Curry? OSBA will provide that service for you. It costs $500. It's something that would start Monday, the 30th. It would run for about two weeks, and they would have a report for you on December 16th about the community feelings around that. If you chose to have OSBA be your contracted consultant, then they deduct that $500 from their fee, which I think is around $7,200. And so I would hope that you would consider that tonight so I could make those arrangements for you. And then to have you consider having a special session, maybe in the first week of December, there, I know there was already been some talk about another meeting, but perhaps we could piggyback on the same night and go through some of the logistics around giving some direction about maybe one or two other consultants, if you wish, or if you make your decision that it's OSBA to be your consultant, and get that work done then. And so then by December 16th, again, you have an action plan in place. My part in this is once you, I have you hooked up with a consultant, then I step out of the whole thing, and that's between the board and a consultant to run all of the rest of the process. So, so that is information about the replacement schedule. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's good reading material, and it would be good to see new business owners, if perhaps you could entertain a consideration for that quality, qualification service, and I could get that going if that's what you'd like to do.
Yes. Yeah. No, matter of fact, making myself a little note.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Scott and I are the only current members who've gone through this process. But yeah, but step one is that qualities and qualifications review, so, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make that, we'll, we'll throw that in news bit, new business.
Very good, very good. So.
Get going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just would like to say that I'm sad, but I understand completely. This year, I think for everybody is brought into focus what's important and where, where we want to be and what we really want to be doing. And I would, never administrated a school district, but I would assume that this year is probably one of the more, if not the most challenging ones anybody's had to deal with in a really long time.
Yeah.
So.
Certainly different.
Yeah, so I absolutely understand and appreciate your, your service the past five years, and we'll, we'll get going.
All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. Questions?
I don't have any questions. It's been a pleasure working with you, Tim.
So that debuts?
Yeah. It's going to continue.
I felt like I had a question, but that sort of turned me off a little bit.
Old business update on COVID-19 metrics.
Oh, I almost forgot about that one.
Yes, let's talk about that.
Yeah, let's talk about that one. So in your packet, probably the best way to, Devin, to show you is, again, very briefly, I've been keeping you up to, up to speed through email. This was the new metric that came out October 30th. Just to remind you how this works, we are in the second row of counties, small counties, and so our metric is based on the number of cases in a two-week look back, that's the 30 or under, and a 5% positivity rate. So when this first came out on October, well, it would have been November 2nd, Central Curry is in the green zone because we had seven cases and a 4.5 positivity rate. So with being in the green zone, that allows us to open K-12. Anytime when we're looking at this metric, you have a two-week roll, not only a two, the metric is based on looking back two weeks at your data, but to make a decision, you have two weeks to make a decision going forward. Since we had already planned tentatively to have hybrid on the 16th, that just kind of, this gave us permission to do that. So our plans continued, we announced that opening. The second round, a week later, because these metrics come out Monday evening, put us in one leg in green, one leg in yellow, because the positivity rate was at 7.8. This week, we're still in the green for the county cases, which was 21 over a two-week period, but we are in orange for the positivity rate, which was 8.5. So if you look at the note in the bottom of that orange column, for counties with an upward positivity trend, you should, the school officials should discuss with their local public health authority and consider the spread of COVID within the schools and the community on deciding which way to go. So as you can see, we only have one more spot to the right to go to. So I placed a call with Cherie Ward today, she wasn't able to get back with me. But one of the things that we're, we will be talking about once we are, we do talk is that specific to Central Curry. So as an example, as we're looking at those county numbers, what is the impact on Central Curry? As an example, we're 12 or 15 of those 21 cases in Brookings and only two here, or maybe if we have five here without all one family versus a spread, community spread. So that's, again, a consideration that Cherie will, Ms. Ward will guide us on. It really is a local decision, but it's certainly, we're going to play the, we're going to do it correctly. So where we are with that, this at this, at this point, because we opened this week, we have two weeks to make our decision what we do with the orange, which puts which puts us to the second week of December. So we either kind of roll the dice. When I say that, you know, we're not talking about safety impacts, but it's that idea of having a consistent model. She may come back and say, no, Tim, you need to go to CBL next week. I don't think that's going to happen. So what I'm hoping for in a best-case scenario is we can continue our current model through December 18 before winter break. And then if the metrics continue to go to the right, or maybe they start to go back to the left a little bit, at least we have more data. If the trend continues to go right, then I would anticipate we might start January back at CBL. But so those will be the metrics that we'll continue to look at throughout the holidays. So that is where we are with the metrics. Can I ask, are there any questions? Or do you have a pretty good, are community members asking, or?
I mean, this doesn't really relate to the metrics specifically, but I have had a question that was passed to me by a teacher.
Okay.
Which was, right now, one of the, it seems like one of the biggest challenges to the hybrid model is transportation in terms of logistics for that.
Well, yeah, okay, I'll listen to the question.
So the question is, there are one or two classrooms that make it statistically almost impossible to have them all back at the same time. And I guess the question was posed to me, is it more challenging to figure out how to break those and staff those, or more challenging to figure out how to juggle the hybrid?
It's actually the, so to clarify for the rest of the board, when we, remember that another, so even though the metrics changed, the rules under Ready School Safe London didn't. And one of the key components of that is each classroom or workspace has a maximum amount of people who could be in the room one tire, based on 35 square feet per person, minus some furniture, blah, blah, blah. So with that metrics, based on the number of kids we knew were coming back to school, there were only like three exceptions across the district that we couldn't accommodate that with everyone coming every day, all day.
Correct.
So those are easy, I would say fairly easy to remedy. If we had a class here at the High Hills, example, we'd just move it to a larger space.
An example is, we do, we actually have one class that is still bigger than it should be in the space that's being taught, so it's actually being taught here in the library, where they're able to distance out quite a bit further. So that's the accommodation we made.
The challenge, quite frankly, as we discovered through transportation, is actually transportation. Because in transportation, we don't have the six-feet rule, but we have essentially the three-foot rule, which really means one person per seat. And so you're now, your 75-passenger bus can only hold 25. And so as we designed those routes, we kept the integrity of what the district has provided for many years now, and that is transportation within a mile of school. We don't have to do that unless the board acts upon that. But we are still continuing to offer 10th and 11th Street, First and Second, Third Street, across the highway. Those are, you know, those are things that where there are safety concerns. But if, so part of our continuing planning is if we can move towards that, how would we adjust the outer circle, if you will, to add more seats there? So that, and that obviously would come from less seats in town. So we have to, we have to judge the impact.
So I think the answer to the question is that busing is an issue either way, whether it's hybrid or full-time, and it's actually, at this point, more complicated full-time than it is hybrid.
Yes, and it's not necessarily complicated in our traditional routes. It's the capacity of the buses.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so that's where we are on the hybrid.
Very good. Move on to new business. First reading of proposed policies, 8.11 through 8.15, which I think are in the...
Some of these are in yellow. And I'll go over those very briefly. These are actually, with all, with one exception, these are all current policies that we just received last Friday, I think it was. Surprise, there's a new policy. So the first one, the federal family and medical, FELLA OFLA, if you will, because of the new COVID leave, again, the highlighted areas are darkened where the changes are. So in this 14-page document, the addition is that for OFLA, sick child leave includes the care of an employee's child whose school or childcare provider has been closed related to the pandemic. So it expands the use of FELLA OFLA, specific to childcare in a pandemic. So all of that then continues into the next, the 8.1.2, I'm sorry. So within that first one, there is a request form, and then there is a district, or the eligibility for the employee in it. So it's the paperwork that goes with the revised policy. The next policy, 8.1.2, really is specific to the COVID-related leave. And that started with the CARES Act. Crystal is our designated expert on the COVID leave. And on the back, you say there's, see, there's some struck language that they basically moved to the policy that I just read. The school counseling program, sorry if I go too fast.
No, I just...
Okay. IJ, the school counseling program, is not new. What is new is in the ARs, what's called the Child Development Specialist Program. And I liken teacher, liken a lot of the professions around education, counselors is the one that's probably the most challenging to maintain, to keep up in this new world of more need for counseling. They have added, for our consideration, the CBL, sorry, CDS program. CDS is essentially a school counselor who is governed by ODE, whereas a school counselor is licensed through TSBC. But they have similar roles. So if you had an outstanding teacher who had that, those skills to be in a counselor role but did not have their degree in counseling, the CDS program would be, you go through a process and application, ODE says yes, and you can be in that role. So in the future, that may, as we continue to have counseling shortages, might be a place where a teacher might move to a different role in the school. Graduation exercises, IKFB basically is stating if you have a graduate who is maybe an early entry into the military, that they can wear their dress uniform at graduation. Or if you had students who had items of cultural significance, that they would be allowed to have that as a part of their graduation attire. Equal opportunity, this is JV. Basically, it's, I think it's in alignment with a lot of the new policies we're seeing around bias and making sure that districts have policies in place as far as anti-discrimination. So there's some new language and directions about communicating to your families through handbooks and so on. And then the last one of the revision, revised policies is JFCM, Threats of Violence. And again, it clarifies the process. And this, again, aligns with some of the new policies around hate symbols and racial issues. So those will come back for a second reading in December. If you have any questions, let me know, and I'd be happy to do the research for you.
All right. Circle back around with that one there.
Yeah.
All right, 8.2, second reading of proposed policy ACB and ACB AR.
So that's the All Students Belong policy. And this came out of the Oregon State Board of Education in September. And this is a required policy for boards to adopt if they want to receive state funding. And so essentially, the essence of this policy is to make sure that there are clear guidelines around any incidences around bias as listed here of all protected classes. It identifies the symbols of hate as being not allowed at school in houses, disruption. And then the administrative rules that go with that is the actual complaint procedure. So this is an action item for you to consider, so.
Anybody have any further questions on that one, or discussion?
No.
I move to adopt policy ACB and ACB AR as presented.
I'll second that.
Calls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, 8.3, OSBA Board Election for South Coast Representation and Resolution in the pink and lime green.
So in your pink, I think, is the actual ballot. Jackie Crook, local resident of Pistol River, and the current incumbent in this position is running out of post to represent the South Coast ESD at the, at the OSBA Board of Directors level. So in your packet is her nomination form from Tenille at ESD, and then Jackie's resume, and so on. So your action tonight would cast a vote in affirmation, or not, of Ms. Crook. And then the second part of the action item is in green, and that's the legislative recommendations. As your lobbyists for OSBA go to the legislature this session, it is, gives their principles and priorities. The principles being the whereas statement. That's the resolution you're asked to approve. The priorities are listed then as the action item that the lobbyists will be working on this session.
Marveling, and still hard Mrs. Crook's resume. Her first year in the district was 1964.
Are these two tied together?
No, they should be separate items.
I want you to know she was Mark. Her first year teaching, Mark Hatcher.
She takes great pleasure in telling people whenever we're at the same meetings, I taught most of these kids at the period I was taking.
And kids, and kids.
Any questions or comments on the OSBA director? Yeah, running out of pos, not much to discuss there.
I move to vote for Jackie Crook for the OSBA director.
I'll second.
Calls in favor? Aye. Posed? All right. Passes. And then separately, we'll do the... I guess we'll call it the... What's that?
Is it a resolution?
Oh, yeah, resolution. Is that on? Yeah, I'll just read it. I move to approve the resolution to adopt the OSBA 2122 Legislative Priorities and Principles Document as presented.
I'll second.
Calls in favor? Aye. Posed?
I'm going to abstain. I am involved in lobbying on other reasons that slightly contradict some things in the legislative proposal there. And so I just want to not...
Perfect, good point. Approved three to zero with one abstention, I think. Did we...
Do we want to read the resolution? Can we do that?
If you'd like to do that, that'd be good.
Normally, we read resolutions that we adopt. Whereas the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee is charged under the OSBA bylaws in developing and associating recommended legislative priorities and principles. And whereas the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee met January, May, and June to develop the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for 2021, '22. And whereas the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee set the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for 21, '22 out to the membership of OSBA for comment and suggested changes. And whereas the overwhelming majority of the comments received by the membership were in support of the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for 21, '22 developed by the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. And whereas the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee met via Zoom via conference call in August to review the feedback received by the membership. And whereas the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee discussed the feedback from the membership and made little modifications to the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for 2021, '22. And whereas the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee approved the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for 21, '22 in its August meeting and urged the OSBA Board of Directors to approve the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for 21, '22 and place them before the membership for approval. Therefore, be resolved by the OSBA Board of Directors that the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for the 21, '22 year be placed before the membership for consideration during the 2020 OSBA election season and be it further resolved that the proposed OSBA legislative priorities and principles for the 21, '22 year and a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all members of boards of the association in accordance with the OSBA Board of Directors' adopted elections calendar.
Thank you. Notice I didn't volunteer for that one.
A lot of whereas.
All right, now, so moved and approved. Okay, that's 8.3, so I just kind of penciled in 8.4, the Qualities and Qualifications document. I personally don't have a problem getting the ball rolling as soon as possible on this. $500 is not, doesn't seem to be an unreasonable amount of money.
I'm supportive.
To get it going on that. Does anybody have any questions about that process, or?
I did just want to add one thing as I went through the OSBA proposal. I remember I was talking about the other agencies that were for you to consider. On page 17, it talks against you the last four years of OSBA's searches. And in 2020 and 2019, it says jointly with Next Up Leadership. So I believe where this comes in is Mr. Kelly is a partner in Next Up Leadership. And so it's kind of a, it's something that OSBA internally has recognized as an approved partner.
Right.
And so by working with OSBA, you would also be working with Next Up, which is the Greg McKenzie.
Yeah, I think that came in present.
They did, they did. Yeah, when Mr. Johnson was in that round of, McKenzie was one of the... I'm not sure if they ended up being the search consultant, or...
I think OSBA did, though, because... I think OSBA did, because they didn't charge, they didn't charge for it then, did they? Or am I thinking of something else?
It wasn't as much, but did Greg, was he the one that used to work for OSBA?
Yes. Yeah, they're all part of the same.
Do their searches.
Yes. So I think either a motion probably be appropriate to.
You know, everybody, everybody okay with that?
Where it's just for the qualities and qualifications.
Yes, yes, just the initial opening phase of the hiring process.
And on your timeline, that would be the two-week online survey, that they would be in contact, probably with Andy, as far as who that gets sent out to, the community and the staff.
And ordinarily, I wouldn't take action quite as rapidly, but if we do it now, we can get data by the, the meeting in December, and I mean, in this particular case, earlier is better.
So if we approve this, it would go to them like tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I move the board, hire the Oregon School Boards Association to conduct the Qualities and Qualifications Survey as soon as possible.
Is that in the motion?
Polls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Citizen input on agenda items. Citizens, speak now.
Do you recognize who our justice was?
Yeah, that was when she takes him, but she, she knows.
Yeah, she, she may have, she was helping.
She worked.
Worked for I, so she may have realized she missed the.
I have one thing to say real fast, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, from being a part of these, these superintendent searches, we've had, and Crystal was a part of it too, we have these meetings over and over again where, what qualities do you want, and, you know, we want somebody that's tall, and, you know, I mean, you spend all this time, but what it really comes down to is getting the opening out there, so you can get candidates in here, because, you know, we're a small district, we're going to have a limited number of candidates, and, and I really think, you know, when you, every time we come out of those meetings, it's the same thing, we want someone that's honest, and, you know, all those qualities, no one's going to say, no, we'll be okay without that, you know, so, so I think those, those means are, yeah, those means are good. But I've always, I've always felt we wasted so much time on some of those, that we just need to, we want the best person that's available, and that's what we want to get, and so don't, just my two cents is, don't spend so much time on developing this big plan on what kind of exact person we want, because we're not going to get that person. You know, that would be great, but we want the best person that's available for the job, just like in a baseball team, you know, and they, they're going to try to get the best hitter they can, and hopefully he's a good fielder too, you know, so, anyway, that's just my two cents, so, thank you.
No, and I would agree, having gone through it twice, I don't, it, it's a formality for me. It's, I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here, we know what we want, we just have to put it in, in paper form for them to advertise with, and, and it's something we do, redo every time. One of the other topics of discussion that will come a little bit later, but not much, is something to be thinking about, is the format, you know, Tim is currently a .8, and our consultant, whoever it may be, can kind of talk to us about the advantages and disadvantages of trying to hire a .8 superintendent, or a .5, or a full-time, you know, and we have this discussion every time this happens, you know, how are we going to keep our current administrative structure as is, or maybe try and change it up to increase the time or decrease, anyway, just food for thought.
Well, and I think the thing that right now that troubles me a little bit is what enrollment's going to look like.
Right.
And how that's going to impact our capacity to pay for that, whichever, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's going to be the challenge, and we may just have to make a decision and go with it, without having all the, all the knowledge we want beforehand, especially on the budget side, you know, we end up waiting until June every year for the legislature to get it together.
When you're coming into anybody on yourself.
Yeah, so they won't be arguing about anything, it'll be fine. He said optimistically. Okay, Board Member Reports, we'll start with Jeremy tonight.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay.
I don't have anything either.
Nancy?
I wrote a couple of things down, so I wouldn't fumble the words, but I didn't speak earlier, but just a thank you to Mr. Wilson for always communicating your knowledge and your organization. It has been refreshing. I have a little history, so I don't have as much as some of the people that are here, but I can tell you that it is nice to be working with someone that is so prepared and can answer the questions or get the answer, and it has been appreciated, and obviously you're going to be around for a while, but I wanted to tell you, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have one thing, and it's not so, social media, did we want to, is that, do you want me to?
Yeah, why don't you, yeah, let's get it out on the, on the record.
I, I had a question for Mr. Wilson, that I asked him before the meeting, and I, I guess I want to put it to the board. And my question was, do we have a policy on commenting on the district's social media? What is allowed? Do we allow comments from the public? And so, and I guess the answer is, we're not really sure.
Well, what I, what I, my, as the one who does the district webpage, I'm sorry, the district Facebook page, I've been posting, you know, with the idea that it's purely informational, and, but there's always a link or a phone number to get more information. Some people have used that as a forum against it. It was in actually trying to go in to turn off comments, that I realized that I actually don't have the power to, you do. You and Scott and maybe Luke, I think, are all administrators for the district page, so you have the rights to change that, and I don't, so.
But I think that the thing that we realized in our brief conversation is that we're not even entirely sure, so for example, if there's inaccurate information posted in a comment, do we actually have the right legally to take it down?
So the easy way out of that is cut off the comments.
Right, which I believe we did on the Friends of Riley Creek.
Yeah, we, we always shut it off, and we were actually counseled of that, because we can't control the input, and we're kind of liable because it's our site, so, so we just immediately say no, you know, we turn off no comments.
So if that's something you or Mr. McNair can take out?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I have, I hate social media, a little more each passing day for some reason, but I think if we as a group, I mean, yeah, I've seen the comments, we've all seen them, you know, it's not really, in my mind, it's not really a forum for back and forth discussion, it's informational, so I have no problem turning the comments off.
I feel as Barbara was the other one, who was still an administrator.
Oh, okay.
That tells you how long it's been, yeah.
I had to track down somebody from like a decade, or well, not quite a decade, but an administrator to get a password for a page, yes. Okay.
Very good.
Take care of that. Anything else?
That was it.
I have very little to add. I do want to say, I know it's hard for people to want, particularly when case counts and hospitalizations are rising, the rationale for having the kids in the building, but my kids, I don't, I've never worried about them, they've always had a pretty good support structure, lots of grandparents around, and, and in, in two days of being in school for half a day, there was a noticeable difference. So I can only imagine the difference it's making to the kids who don't have that, and that's been my very vocal concern this, this entire time, so I'm happy that it's happening, and I hope it's able to, we're able to continue making it happen, and I, you know, say, as long as it's being done safely and we're not, you know, yeah, I, I hope it can continue, and we'll, we'll just hope for the best.
Yes, yes.
And I do also want to say, now that my wife's not here, I'll speak nicely of her. Having a front row seat to what it took to get the Hive program up and running was a pretty unbelievable amount of work and coordination, and I'm, she and I had been talking about it since March, you know, okay, let's assume, I was in denial for quite some time. No, no, kids are going to school, they're going to school in September, no way, but reality set in, and, you know, the question became, back to the kids who don't have the support structure, what's going to happen to those kids? You know, the idea of the Hive kind of spawned over the course of the summer. Anyway, I, I was always continually impressed about the amount of work that it took to make that happen, and to continue to make it happen, and logistics, and coordinating with school, and, so, anyway.
The library Facebook page has been posting over the course, starting on the weekend, and will be posting through this next weekend, little brief profiles of each of the staff, basically thanking them for what they're doing. So if you are so inclined, give them your best wishes on social media. And, yeah, they, they have done an amazing job, and if the district gets to a point where, come Christmas break, there have to be changes, let, let's talk.
Very good. All right, next regular board meeting, December 16th, 2020. Keep your, should have some other meeting updates coming via email, and we'll, we'll keep going on that. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:22.